Awesome.
Great, so since we're recording, we can start before eight, right?
Are you recording yet, Mark?
Just started.
Okay, good to go.
Great, like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Davis, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Eichholz?
Here.
Dr. Hooker?
Here.
Mrs. Johnston?
Here.
Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. Singh?
Yeah.
And I'd like to have a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda and the addendum.
So moved.
So second?
Second. I've got Mrs. Lewis for the second.
Okay, do we need a roll call for this?
We usually just do a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with the Ohio revised code to consider the appointment, employment, or compensation of public employees.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye. We will be back.
Should we, we should all mute the video, right?
Right.
Yeah, you should mute your audio here and then give me about 30 seconds all before you dial in.
Yeah. 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 Don't forget to unmute.
Are you recording again, Mark?
I usually leave mine muted unless I'm talking. It makes a better recording, guys.
I'm gonna put down eight thirteen as out of executive session.
My video is off and it says you cannot start your video because the host has disabled it.
Okay, Mark? Did you hear that?
It looks like Eddie's blacked out, too.
I was intentionally blacked out.
Okay.
Okay, he got it.
There you are. Okay, Elizabeth, are you here? I don't see you.
Yep.
You don't?
No, now I do. Now that you're talking, I do, but I just didn't see you on the gallery. Okay, I believe we're all here. Okay, so the first order of business is number five on the agenda. We need to vote to approve the resolution for continued cooperations during the pendency of executive order twenty oh one D. That's a new word. And you all had a copy to read, and the reason that we're doing this now in the agenda is because it governs how we're actually holding this meeting. So could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any need for discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence, recognition, and announcements. Mr. Kneckke?
Welcome and welcome, board members. Obviously, I appreciate everybody and your flexibility this morning with this agenda, and thank you for passing that resolution. First, just two quick recognition items for this agenda. We want to recognize our Indian Hill music educators who were recently named to the 2020 Best Communities for Music Education. I believe that this is the seventh time in a row, if I'm not mistaken, that our music educators have been approved for this honor. So congratulations to all of our music educators across the district. Yay. The second item for recognition is Indian Hill School District was recently named a U.S. News and World Report top school in Ohio, number two in the Cincinnati region. So again, this is something that maybe some people have gotten used to around here annually and speaks to the high quality of education of our staff and students and families, and we congratulate everyone.
Absolutely.
Moving on to the superintendent's report, we have several personnel items for approval. Item one is approval of supplementals. This is to take care of winter sports supplementals. Item two is approval of a classified staff contract. Item three are retirements and resignations. Item four is the approval of certified staff members. Again, these are all teaching positions that are replacing retirees. Item five is continuing employment contract recommendations. Item six is our classified employment contract recommendations for next school year. Item seven, I would point out, again, our administrative contract renewals, including our very own Heather Higdon and Erin Owens and our treasurer, McDavis. Item eight, for your consideration, is our athletic director candidate, Mr. Brian Phelps. Item nine are the non-renewals of our limited contracts. These are things that we do annually for our sub-drivers, sub-8s. And item 10 are several tuition reimbursements. If there are no questions.
Yeah, sorry, I was... Could we have a motion to approve items A, one through 10? Wait, sorry. One through 10.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I just like to point, just like to point out before the vote here, if possible, again, I'm very excited to be and happy that the board is looking at Mr. Davis's contract renewal and so proud of him and just want to take a moment while we all have time to thank McDavis publicly for all the work that he has done. And I have had reinforced to me over the last month and a half during this global pandemic just how valuable this school treasurer is to me and to all of our team. So congratulations and a big thank you to McDavis.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you for those kind words.
Absolutely. You deserve all those words. You even deserve even more than that. You have really been stood up and done amazing job during this time and have been great. We're really lucky to have you here.
Thank you.
I think we're all on the same page, Mac. Thank you.
Yep.
Just a point of order, Mrs. Eichholz. We are also voting for the unfortunate, for us, the resignation of Mike Hayes, which was on the addendum.
Okay, so items, item A, one through 10, plus the addendum, I guess, is the revised motion.
So moved.
And I got Mrs. Lewis as a second.
Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker? Dr. Hooker?
I was unmuted. Aye.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye. Just about the time we get used to this, we'll all be back together again, hopefully.
We, board members, we will welcome Mr. Phelps at a later date, our new athletic director. I just want to congratulate Brian and welcome him to the Indian Hill Schools. We'll have a chance to meet Brian in person, obviously, hopefully sooner rather than later, and we also want to wish Mr. Mike Hayes the best as the new head principal of Aurora High School. We will miss Mike. He's done a fabulous job here and we wish him well.
Ditto to that. And I did sit in on the last interview for the final candidates for the athletic director, and I feel that you're all going to be very pleased with, you know, what the direction, the district wanted to go with our athletic director. He's very personal. You'll like him. He's going to be strong. I just hope we have sports in the fall to have him working with. All right, treasurer's report. Mr. Davis?
Before I start my treasurer's report, I do want to thank the Board of Education for approving the five-year contract. I look forward to the next half decade with the district and doing great things. So once again, thank you so much for your trust in me. I hope I do nothing to ruin that trust and to work hard and to make this, continue to make this school district the best in the state. Thank you again. Under my report, I have three different minutes to approve. I have a March 2nd, 2020 special meeting, March 3rd regular meeting, and the March 12th special meeting. Item B is to approve the monthly financial reports for the month ending March 31st, 2020. I have one contract to approve. This is an annual contract we do with the Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services. This is $50,000 per student at Roast or Fairfax Schools. I do believe, and Erica, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we will have one student attending there next year. Is Erica with us?
Yeah.
That's correct. Sorry. I forget that not everybody probably can see me when I nod my head.
Okay, thank you, Erica.
Yep.
Item D is a resolution accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission. This is an annual resolution that we do. This concludes the revenue budgeting for us from the county auditor. This is the final step in that process for next fiscal year. Item E is the acceptance of donations. There are five of them from the IH Foundation. The first is to the high school for an analytical balance. It's a $1,600 donation. The second one is to the high school as well, two 3D printers and a router, $2,500. To the high school for a thermal imaging camera for $450. And this is the one I've been practicing at home to see if I'll say it correctly when I do the meeting. To the high school, many one gel electrophoresis system, $2,560. And the final one is the primary school for STEM supplies for $5,000. As always...
It's perfect.
Thank you, Eddie. I know you're always rooting for me down there at the end of the, our end of the world for the board meetings when I get the hard words to say. We always appreciate the donations we receive from all of our community and especially here to the foundation for the donations they've made during the time we've had since our last board meeting.
What are they going to use the thermal camera for?
Kirk, do you know that one?
All, my understanding is that all of these are related to some of the work that's going to be doing, being done in some of our high-level science courses, so chemistry, biology, and some of the labs that they're going to be conducting. So I'm really excited to see what they do in some of those labs in the future, and much of this also is related to, of course, STEM work in our maker spaces and our digital computer labs. So all exciting equipment for the students to learn with.
Cool.
And that's all I have for this morning.
Again, I think we just really want to thank the Indian Hill Foundation through their grant program to be able to fund these, and I know that Dr. Stewart helps to coordinate some of the application process and review the seriousness of some of these curricular additions. So thank you to Melissa and thank you to our foundation partners for their generosity.
And also, thank you to the foundation for working so quickly to get the Braves Helping Braves Fund up and running, and for those of us, just remember that fund is there, and if anyone is looking to do something to support the schools, that's a great way to support our community at this time. So could I have a motion to approve treasurer's report, A through E, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, Nick, do you want to address the new policy updates, or is that Kirk?
I can address them briefly. Members, this is just a first reading of several annual policy revisions and updates. I would simply point out that A through D provide us with some flexibility in terms of timelines and lists for job postings and acceptance for board agendas. Items E through H again deal with how we language and communicate about contracts with employees and to meet timelines where special education and gifted education are involved, and specifically items J and K deal with us revising our policies to meet the new ODE requirements for graduation for successive classes moving forward to make sure that we have our timelines, guidelines, and plans for intervention with at-risk students in place, and we have all of those things, of course. So just a first reading of all of these at this time.
And I would just encourage all the board members to please, before our next meeting, take some time to read these. I know they're, it's exciting. But the way they're, the way they're written, you can see easily where the changes and deletions have been made. So please take some time to do that.
Nikki?
Yes.
I just wanted you to know, you weren't on here when we adopted Neola. This thing is fantastic. It's basically, they update everything, keep us in legal, out of legal trouble, keep us totally straight. It's done at a really high level. And so we, our policies were a wreck before we did this. So it is a well-spent thing, so please take the time to read through it, but it's really very, very well done.
Sure, I will. Thank you.
It used to be a binder on the desk in the district office. So much easier to find what you're looking for now. And that was something that Mr. Davis brought with him, okay? Encouraged us to do that. Huge help. Okay, so there's no vote to be taken there. So we'll move on to other business by the board administration. So I just want to bring up briefly, you know, obviously, when we were together last on March twelfth, right? We had, obviously, we had our vote regarding the bond and operating levy and the amounts, and all of that has been sent to the auditor. And I believe you all saw the response from the auditor and got that information that you can review at your leisure if you have not already. But clearly, literally, the next day, the world changed. And we all got sent home. A lot of things have happened and we're in kind of an unknown place. So the vote is not on the agenda, but did want to kind of just have a brief discussion about kind of where everyone is. I think we're, my personal opinion is that we're in kind of a wait-and-see pattern right now. We just don't really know when or how quickly this economy is going to rebound. We just don't know really much of anything right now. We don't, we do not have to take a vote until July. We have until mid-July before this has to go back to the auditor's office and have an approval vote. But keep in mind that we have meetings in May and June, but we typically don't have a meeting in July. So if we do push it to early July before we make a decision to have a vote, that's okay. We just have to schedule a special meeting to do that. So just kind of keep that in mind. And Kirk, just to clarify, I should look this up before the meeting. What, when's our next meeting scheduled in May? What's the date?
Next meeting is scheduled, I believe, for May nineteenth. And if we are going to be meeting in, that's the third Tuesday of the month. And again, the time could be determined by you members, depending on whether we need to do it remotely or in person with social distancing. Right now, I think we should probably choose a time when you're ready to do another remote meeting.
Okay, so what, I just wanted to be sure that we have, you know, a decent amount of time between this meeting and that meeting. So it's what, at least three full weeks, maybe four?
Yeah, I, I think we should plan to try to have that meeting in person. If we don't, we don't. But I'm hoping that things will be open enough. We can do some social distancing with it and all that. But I hope that we can have that in person. So I would plan for an evening meeting at this point. I'll just say my two cents. I, I think we need to wait. I agree with you, Nancy, a hundred percent, before we make the decision. My feeling is, is that the need didn't go away. And that I think that we will find support out there. I could be wrong. I think that there will be a good litmus test on issue seven, and we can look at, see what happens with Loveland. We'll certainly get some ideas there and shouldn't make this decision till May or to June or early July. But my, and I'm willing to change my mind and willing to hear everybody's opinion, but my gut is that we need to continue on with it. If we fail, we fail. But I, I really think we probably should. I don't think the need went away.
I agree with you, Eddie. I mean, obviously, the world has changed, but we're planning for long-term, not the short term, and the need is definitely there. My concern is if we put it out till July, a decision, and I'm not sure that we're going to have much choice, though, because we have to see how everything unfolds. But what happens to the committees that are going to work on it? Because they were getting excited to, to start in May, right?
Good point. I hadn't thought about it that way.
I mean, I don't think we can make a decision now. Maybe in May, things will be a little clearer if the economy opens up.
And I think, I think the big question will be is if we can at all possibly get together in person in May, that would help a lot, just to have an open public meeting. I mean, this is an open public meeting too, but it's different, to be out there in public having the conversation, because that's, that's what we did all along. We're very transparent, very open and very engaging. So I think that might make a difference too, just the, just that ability to be together. And we can always call a special meeting. You know, we don't have to wait until a meeting date in June or July. We can always call a special meeting. We've certainly done that in the past.
I think it's just important, sorry, Kim. I think it's just important to recognize that as a board, we plan for the future and not to lose that perspective. You know, we can't be thrown off track because of roadblocks in the way, and we have to find a way to work around it and definitely understand it. But let's hope things clear up. Eddie, get to it.
I, I think, I tend to agree that we, it's kind of a wait-and-see. Nobody really knows what this is going to look like from an economic standpoint or otherwise over the next thirty, sixty, ninety days. So I am supportive of, number one, trying to get together and having as many open conversations as we can before a vote and be as transparent as possible. Additionally, you know, one of the things that I think is going to be critical, whether or not, no matter how the vote goes, whether we put it on the ballot or we don't, I think the administrators are going to have to be prepared and start really thinking about what, you know, if we don't put it, if we, if we take a vote and don't put it on the ballot, or if we take a vote and put it on the ballot and it fails, I think the administrators are going to have to be ready and prepared to do a Plan B. Because I think Eddie or Elizabeth or Nancy mentioned that our need is not going to go away. And, you know, really, from an operating standpoint, operating income standpoint, it's not. But we're going to have to find a way to cut expenses in order to make sure that we're able to operate. And as you mentioned, Elizabeth, look to the future, because we don't want to spend all of our, you know, excess capital in one or two years. We really have to be looking down the road. And I, for one, am not sure that it would pass Olivia at this point. But, but none of us, again, know what it's going to look like in July when we have to take the vote. So I'm really kind of a wait-and-see, and I really haven't made my mind up.
I would say the same thing, that the way situations are right now, and we don't know a lot of things, I would rather wait and rush into it, because, you know, there are a lot of people who are in a very difficult situation. And my worry is, if we take this forward, it'll probably be a little extra burden on them. So whenever we make a decision, I think we just have to be a little mindful of what these people, how are they going to manage, whether if, if it passes, it's going to be a little extra for them. If it doesn't pass us, it's again going to be a problem for all of us. So I think it is too early to say anything, whether we should go or whether we should not go, and just wait and watch how things go around in next few weeks.
Mick, I do have a question for you. One piece of data, which I do not know whether we will have at the beginning of July, is obviously, tax bills come out in June and are due, I think at the end of June. It would, it would be really helpful to know whether rate of non-payments will go up in June. Know whether we will have that information before we can make a decision.
I can try to get that from the auditor's office. I don't know if they'll have that available at that time. We probably could look at the percentage at that time. I know there'll be stragglers that will come in as well. It helps that delinquency number go down. Before they do, I believe they usually prepare the final sort of payment reconciliation. I think that usually comes out in September for that, that second payment of the year. But I can definitely work with the auditor's office and see what, what the rate of payment is as of June thirtieth and help them and see if they can keep track of that for me over time.
Yeah, I would bet you that that's not going to be available till end of July, early August. I doubt you're going to get a report. It'd be lovely if we had one, Kim. I agree a hundred percent, but I doubt we're going to have that data.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be available in the, the data we need, but we could have some kind of preliminary idea.
They could do year-to-year. They could say, June thirtieth, this is what percent we normally have and compare that. That might be, that might be a number we could get. You know, normally, we have seventy-two percent in at this point, and we have seventy-four percent in. Great, we're, we're, we're doing well.
Yep. Yep, I will keep track of that for you.
Good point.
Can I ask you this question? So with the situation, is there any extra expense that has been added to our budget? Because we are out and we are delivering the food and doing also nice things for our students?
Food is, that part of it is all being paid for, reimbursed by the federal government. We are paying some for the gas that we use to deliver it. Otherwise, we're mostly seeing benefits financially from the, from the current pandemic. We're no longer paying subs. We're no longer paying overtime. Our buses are sitting idle, not using fuel. We've taken the insurance off the buses as far as being on the road. The insurance remains on them, so if anything would happen to them in the parking lot, they would be covered. We are also saving money and lack, we're not doing professional development at this time. So there are several things that are going on right now that are saving the district money. And then is, you know, what we're doing now is we're talking about what, what the fall looks like and potentially, you know, how, how we could construct personnel potentially. There may be changes to our busing system. There may be changes to how we need to prepare the buildings as far as getting them clean. There's, there's a lot of variables out there that we're looking at in the fall that right now I just don't know. But right now, as a net, I would say we are saving, saving money over what we would normally spend at the end of the year. There are very few added expenses at this point.
What about graduation?
Excuse me?
What about graduation? You know, we got in the newspaper because of a, you know, inquiry. Are we thinking anything like that? Is there anything going on with that?
Yeah, Dr. Hooker, there have been several conversations at the high school with students, families and teachers, and a survey was put out. Our students and families would like to see a rescheduled graduation ceremony at a later date. We have not set a date yet, because we are waiting on government guidance about larger gatherings, and we didn't want to have to plan again and again. But that is something we will honor because of the feedback we received. In the meantime, what we are going to do in May is try to honor some of the closing calendar dates, and we will be putting out a end-of-year calendar and some communication to the district later this week that explains some of those items. We're going to try to celebrate the class of twenty twenty as we close the school year, but we will not be hosting a virtual ceremony, per se. We're going to do some things with some videos, some speeches, some photographs, and honor the class in that way. But they have said distinctly that they would like us to reschedule both prom and graduation for a later date.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add to that is, because I have been part of these conversations with Jeff Damidio, and I just want to say, he is being so amazing, like all the messages that he has been sending to the students, his message on the day when the lights were lit at the, it just literally brought tears in my eyes, like when I heard it, because I have a senior and I can feel it, what the senior class is going through. And I think the senior class has been very patiently working with him. And I really applaud Jeff that, besides so many others, district principals who have just taken the plug out or said that there'll be no graduation or we'll have virtual graduation of, we're just going to send your degrees home. He has still stood up, and he is hopeful that we will be able to do something safely for these students to celebrate that. And I really, as a mother, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I, I don't think there's any doubt Kirk and Mick and Melissa and everybody, Erica, everybody that's on the call, we've all been, I'm sure, just beyond impressed with how nimble you've been, how responsive. I know that you're all giving up a lot of your own personal time, because it isn't necessarily easier to work from home. You have added responsibilities at home with your own children and your, your families, and then trying to navigate, you know, who gets what room for what technology and all that kind of stuff. So just personally, I'm so appreciative of everything you've done. I'm not surprised, because you always rise to the occasion. But I just want to be sure that that message is passed on, you know, to the rest of the staff as well. It's been, it's been a trying time, but you guys have really done it without a hair out of place and with smiles on your faces, too. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Nancy.
Is there any other business to be discussed under other business committees? Okay, then could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, everybody.
Take care. Be well.